Hey.
Hey.
Whenever we come in, we come in, right?
We do.
Alright.
That's how we do it.
Hey yo, what's up? This is Will the Underdog Richardson.
And I am your girl April, AKA Mother Goose.
And this is That's Lot of Podcast where we talk things, relationships, uh, business and politics.
Yes.
And uh, right now, we're in the political season. So we've been having a few uh, candidates to come on and, and talk about their candidacy and their run to office. And I'm excited for each person that we bring on because I'm not running right now.
I know, right? Hallelujah!
It feels good not to be running right now, I'm telling you. But you know, when, when I run, when I did run, I learned a lot. And so uh, as I see people running, you know, if I see them doing something that's gonna be like a, a brick wall that nobody told me was a brick wall, I pick up the phone and I call them. I say, hey, April, hey sis, I see you finna do this. You might wanna look at this, you know what I'm saying? So just the information that I've gathered uh, over the years of running, being able to uh, assist other people has been like soup, super duper fun for me in this season. Cause it keeps me engaged in politics still, without having to worry about if you're gonna win or lose and knocking on doors and all that type of stuff. So, so um, yeah, I'm excited about that. So how was your week?
Oh, my week was amazing. Um, got a chance to go to Erykah Badu and Mos Def concert this past Friday.
Yeah.
And it was phenomenal. It was a good time.
Come on, be honest. What you thinking about? Come on, I mean, cause everybody on Facebook was like.
It was great. But Erykah is in another zone, dimension there too. And um, you know, she doesn't really need an audience. She kinda entertained herself. Uh, but her music is still amazing and her voice is still, and she looks good to be fifty-six years old. That woman looks amazing. And she still has the energy, um, the, her vibrant spirit. And then she was calling down other little spirits and I had to go into my little prayer closet. I was just like, uh, uh, where am I at right now? But no, seriously, it was great. And Mos Def, that was my first time ever seeing him perform.
Yeah.
And, and he's different, but he's also still has.
Relevancy.
Yes, he does.
See like for me, see like me, I'm a hip hop head. So I'm a hip hop junkie. So Mos Def to me is, you know, a top, you know, not top.
Oh, oh, he was, you know.
You know, he's top tier. You know what I'm saying? I mean, he made classic hits and everything, but he's one of those conscious rappers. So he doesn't get a lot of mainstream.
Right.
It's a lot of the songs that he was rapping, you guys didn't know. But I was like, right there with him, like, yo.
I knew some, I knew some.
You knew one or two.
About two.
Two, two. How many songs he do, like?
He did about two.
About two, yeah, okay. So you about twenty percent.
I was still vibing, I was still grooving. I was like, yeah, that's it right here. But then when he started putting his arms out and swinging around and circling the circle, like, you know.
He just said he wants you to be free.
And then he was doing the rose petals and he'd take him up and then throw him.
I did not understand the rose petals. I didn't get that.
I didn't. But you know, hey, he got it. And he entertained us. And hey, he came, did what he's supposed to do and I enjoyed it.
But Erykah Badu, she came out and I was like, okay. One, you know, I've seen her, this is my second time seeing her. And the first time, I guess I didn't notice how short she was. So I had to Google, I'm like, she's only five foot tall. So I was like, man, you know, I always thought that she was like five, six, five, seven or something like that. And so it was interesting to see, you know, her that close and everything. And you could see her eyes, you know what I'm saying? I'm like, we got some good seats, I appreciate that.
I don't know, probably in the time.
Yeah, yeah, we got some good, I saw her eyes. I was like, I'm just trying to see her brown, okay. So yeah, uh, but you know, people were talking about the fact that it was like a spiritual moment. But that was, that's what kills me about people on Facebook, right? They always talking about burning sage and clean energy and negative energy. And then when they see a woman on stage really burning stuff and doing all this stuff, they be freaking out.
They do.
Like, what part y'all doing at home?
People behind him was like, oh lord, lord and Jesus, help me. I was like, wait a minute, what's the pyramid? I'm like, it's the three Trinity. I mean, Father, the Son, Holy Spirit. I mean, it depends on how you interpret and look at it.
Right, right.
I feel like I lost my relationship or connection with God because I was at the concert.
Two things on that. I think, one, before you go to a concert, do your research on who you're going to see.
Right.
And then two, if you got Christ embedded in you, then it don't really matter what's in front of you.
Exactly, exactly.
Y'all freaking out about the wrong stuff.
They were, man, but they were hot too, cause there was so much weed.
They did smoke a lot of weed, man. That's the thing about the FedEx form. I mean, I guess you really can't censor weed now, cause you, I mean, you go through a metal detector, they're not looking for, they're looking for guns and knives and they're looking for marijuana. So it was marijuana festing.
Dude sat right beside me, he rolled up too. And I was just like, I'm gonna have to take a drug test tomorrow.
I started to give you a drug test before you came in here, make sure you was straight.
I wasn't gonna say nothing to him, like, put it down. I was just like.
Man, just embedded, just embedded in weed smoke.
That's it.
Yeah. Um, my week was pretty good. You know, the concert was nice. Uh, just got back from St. Louis picking up a little grandson, uh, Carter Bean. He at the house right now with Tanya, running rampant. So I'm glad I'm doing the podcast right now. Give me a little break. Man kept me the whole time on the road. Are we there yet? How long's it gonna be? How long's it gonna be? I was like, we almost there. And then when he taught a pyramid, he was like, oh, yeah, yeah, we, we made it. So yeah, I'm, I'm excited about having him for I think two weeks. It was gonna be a month, but two weeks a day, two weeks a day, two weeks a day. Well, look, we gonna jump right into this, um, this series of politics. I don't wanna waste this man's time any longer, cause he's a very busy guy in this season.
Yes, he is.
And he's doing uh, some phenomenal thing. Well, let me say this, he's been doing phenomenal things.
Yes.
Uh, one thing that I will say about some candidates, I'm not gonna say this about all candidates. Now, I would not trash any candidate.
Right.
But there are some candidates I'm gonna give extra, uh, you know, a pat on the back because I've seen them do the work. And that's what I'm about, I'm about to work. And this uh, gentleman has been doing the work for a long time in the community. I think the first time that him, he and I connected, well, we connected through work like twenty-something years ago.
Right.
Uh, but it wasn't until like down the road where he was doing a uh, Feed the Homeless deal on Facebook. And I was like, okay, I know him. You know, let me uh, reconnect with this guy. I mean, you know, he's walking the streets, he's feeding the homeless, he's finding people that need assistance way back, it's like maybe five years ago. And I was like, okay, I'm gonna start following him. And he just kept doing it. The servitude just kept continuing. And it's a continuum of servitude. And so that's what we need, um,
Exactly.
In these seats is people who aren't afraid to serve the people and not just, not just serving uh, to get a pat on the back, but actually identifying their need and then addressing the need. And so uh, without further ado, I'm gonna bring on my friend, my good friend, Mr. Brian Harris, who's running for city council, District Eight Three. How you doing, sir?
Man, doing well, sir. I appreciate you having me on, bro.
Oh man, always, always. Had to go through the, you know, through the uh, show regimen before we put you on, you know what I'm saying? He was like, y'all ain't include me in nothing.
I'm enjoying listening to you, yeah.
Cause I'm just sitting here like.
He like, man, when y'all gonna put me on? So uh, Brian, man, uh, wow, where do we start? Like, like, what gives you the, the, the driver, the push? Or when did you get that revelation that you wanted to get into politics and serve our city?
It's a great question. So man, I'm a native Memphian. I've been there all my life. And what was interesting is my parents, which my dad would be eighty in August.
Okay, cool.
My mom's seventy-seven. And they've always had us involved in political um, strategy and work.
Okay.
Uh, especially when it comes to benefiting people. And so I would truly say that this started when I was like six years old in my church, Mississippi Boulevard Christian Church. Well, I'm still a member.
Okay.
Um, and just serving people, whether it was feeding the elderly, taking baskets to them, or we used to have a garden when I grew up in Westwood.
Okay.
My dad would make me harvest stuff and go take a little brown paper sack to the neighbors.
Okay.
Um, and so that's where it started as a child.
Okay.
And then just as it progressed, when I came into my own man and saw what they were training me for, and saw the gaps in our cities and our community, I said, somebody's gotta stand up for what's right.
That's right.
And make sure that everybody has an equitable seat at the table. Not some, but all voices. And that's what really gave me the energy. For, for years, people have been telling me, you need to run for office. Yeah, people say that.
Right, 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 right.
But you have to know that's your calling.
That's your calling to do, right.
And I always say that, you know, we choose our career, you know, but our calling chooses us.
That's it.
That's true.
And so public service has been a calling for me. Um, that's why I threw my hat in the rain for this round.
Right. You know, and you can tell when it's real, because you know, there's no effort behind it. I mean, it just feels like this is natural. This is what I'm supposed to be doing. And you know, when I'm out doing uh, you know, public service, it's not like I'm being forced to like, oh man, I gotta do this event. I'm excited the night before that I'm going out to make a difference within the community. And you know, uh, and that's key when you're doing this, because you know, after you win this race, you know, it gets even more demanding on what the need is. People know who to go to now, who to call upon. And so, if you don't have it in your heart beforehand, then you're gonna struggle.
Exactly.
When you're in that seat. So, so what are some of your plans and what is your platform when it comes to making our city better?
Yeah, the, the, the first thing, number one, is going back to what I just said about equality and equity. If you think about Memphis and people who truly know Memphis, we're truly a city that's divided between the haves and the have-nots.
Absolutely.
And so that's one of the things is making sure that money flows beyond downtown Memphis and midtown. It actually flows into our communities.
Absolutely.
Because the number one thing everybody's talking about right now is crime. Okay. And I had to explain to a person the other day, I said, yeah, we can easily say we need, you know, go from sixteen hundred offices to twenty-five hundred office, what it used to be.
Right.
Okay, that's an easy answer.
Right.
But let's back up. So when you think about what is causing crime, it's poverty and the lack of access to certain amenities, which is causing a gap, which is forcing people into crime. And so until we address the symptoms, how can we, you know, treat the disease?
That's it.
Right.
And so the biggest thing with me, number one, of course, is public safety on the forefront. But our youth, that is critical, that we invest in our young people.
Absolutely.
And also just economic development and the focus of poverty.
Okay.
So those are four things that we're running on, because the theme for this campaign is building strong families and thriving communities.
Absolutely.
And all those things link right back to that theme.
That's it.
Absolutely. Yeah, you mentioned crime. I think that's one of the top issues that people are concerned about. And it's funny you say that, because when you talk about crime, the first thing we say is lock them up.
Right.
Right.
Get more police officers. It's like, but that's not addressing the root cause, right? And so I'm glad that you touched on that, cause I'm in total agreement with that, is that we've gotta go back and start working on people. Giving them the resources that they need to be successful. If people are making money, they aren't committing crimes.
Correct.
And yeah, maybe they didn't go to high school, or maybe they dropped out, or maybe they, it's a lot of maybes, right? But you cannot negate the fact that people still want an opportunity.
They do.
And we have the money and the dollars, but we have to funnel them in the right direction, so that people can have access to that and utilize it to be successful.
That's true.
So we talked about crime, but I think the second biggest thing in this season for people that are concerned, citizens and who are voting and listening to you today, what about the MLGNW issue? Why is it every time that it rains, man, my power go out? Man, can you do anything about that down there in City Hall?
So let me say this, of course, we know that um, Memphis Light Gas and Water is the largest utility company who provides three services in the nation.
Right.
And so one thing we have to think about is that, number one, we fund it, you know, we fund.
Right.
You know, MLGNW.
We own MLGNW.
But as a person that has served twenty-three years in mid to senior leadership and executive management, there has to be every I dotted and every T crossed. And there has to be checks and balances. MLGNW has received a ton of money. So the biggest thing we did look at, number one, is, and of course, they just changed leadership, so I have to be fair with the CEO, the changes. However, is that we need to audit where those dollars are being spent, number one. And everybody keeps saying, which we do need to invest in our infrastructure.
Right.
But number one, if the wind blows slightly, the power goes out.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
That's a problem. If you drive down um, Stage Road, for example, those poles just snap.
Mm-hmm.
Because they're old, they're deteriorated. So the first thing, if we know that the slightest wind will knock out our power, why wouldn't we make sure, number one, that we, it's two things you can do. You can put the lines underground.
Yes, sir.
Or you can replace the pole with steel poles.
Right.
That should be a critical priority. Anybody in leadership knows, you gotta have a burning platform. What are your three big rocks? And with me, we, I have not heard outside of, hey, we're working on the infrastructure, what segments and what is the order that you're working on within?
Exactly.
The other thing, going back to MLGNW when it comes to money, and this was just in the Daily Memphian, they turn down money from the state. Okay? Say, we don't need the money.
Wow.
We're good.
Wow.
Okay? They turned down money from the state.
Right.
Okay, so our state was allocating funds to invest in the water system and do different things, but yet we pumped the brakes saying, no, we're good, but we're not good.
Right.
Right.
And so that's the biggest thing as a potential councilman, is that to challenge the status quo. And I want direct answers of where things are going.
Right.
But also, let's just don't do a community forum during election time.
Right.
We should always be having forums updating our public, but also more importantly, updating them, hearing their concerns.
Right.
And just like we know what zip codes are affected by allergies, where are we prioritizing those in those repairs?
Right.
So.
Hey, is a guy that's got his research?
I, all the way.
You know, and that's what it takes to be a good candidate in this race. Know your facts, you know? And uh, we've had people on the show and we asked them questions like that.
Oh, I got it.
They're dumbfounded. Like, I didn't think about that. Like, you gotta be thinking about that.
Gotta be ahead of it.
You gotta be thinking about that. And I like the fact that you said that you are gonna be um, a uh, leader that's gonna continue to educate and be in contact with your constituents and not just around the time that you run. Because we do know that some constituents, some candidates only show up when it's go time.
Oh, yeah.
And then once they win, you like, okay. Or if you should not be successful, they go away.
They go away.
You gotta continue to be involved if you really care about the community.
Absolutely.
But like you said, I think it starts in the beginning. And Brian has shown that throughout the years, just of his servant hood, of doing the work even without the title.
Right.
That's what's most important. You know what I mean? Cause anybody can get a title, but can you do the work? And can you serve, be the servant and actually do your part as far as it's in the position? So yeah.
Yeah, man.
That's something that's already been established.
So this is uh, currently, this seat is being held by Martavis Jones.
Correct, which, you know, he's term limited.
He's term limited out. So this is an open seat. That being said, I think you have about seven?
So I'm, I'm laughing because, you know, initially it was twelve.
Okay.
Okay.
Now it's down to seven, which you are correct, who actually qualified, got the signatures, they paid the hundred dollar filing fee, but they have until the twenty-seventh to withdraw.
Okay.
Okay.
And so the biggest thing, and well, you know this from being in politics and April, you know, the biggest thing is that everybody wants to be a hero.
Right.
Or a hero.
Right.
But again, if you know you don't have the support, and finances, as you know, is a critical.
Yes.
Got to have some money.
You gotta have some money.
Gotta have the money, yes.
Right. You gotta have faith, but you gotta have money too.
Right.
Faith don't work, it's dead.
It's dead. But again, and I'm not just speaking this race, I'm speaking globally.
It's all over.
For the mayor's race, you have nineteen people in this race. Nineteen.
What do you say to that?
Ridiculous, I'm sorry.
No.
You was asking Brian.
She just said the words out of my mouth. It's absolutely ridiculous.
It is.
And it's so bad that, I was just sharing this before we went on air here, is that only ninety-six thousand people voted for the mayor in twenty-nineteen.
Right.
Out of five hundred and twenty-six thousand registered voters.
Right.
City council races, forty-two thousand people only voted.
Right.
Which is ridiculous.
Right.
But now they're projecting, it's worse, the turnout's gonna be even worse.
Yeah.
Because it's a circus.
It's a fiasco, man.
It's a circus.
You know, um, at first I was like, okay, you know, um, when the mayor um, opportunity started, the talk started coming around, people would hit me up and say, hey, do you have, do I have your support? And I'm like, bro, where you been?
Right, who are you?
Yeah, yeah, right, right. You gonna jump all the way to the mayor already? Uh, so you know, out of the nineteen people, I'm thinking four or five really deserve people's attention, but you done, you do your homework and do your research and, and um, and I think that the turnout will be lower because it's so many people. People are like, it really don't make a difference.
Exactly.
You know what I'm saying? But it really does matter. It does matter. It does matter. Uh, and the same thing with your race. And I remember the first time I ran for uh, city council, District Seven, we had nine people in the race. And only three of us were showing up at the, at the forums.
Right.
The other six were just at home, just chilling out. Like, why do you have your name on the back? And they got votes.
Right.
They got votes, yes.
It was like eighteen or twenty, but they still got votes.
I mean, you wasting space and votes, man, and time.
Right, right, right. And I think that the citizens deserve better, you know, we should have narrowed, we still should narrow down this uh, mayor's race. I've made attempts to, to reach out to a few of them and say, hey, bro, ma'am, let's think about this. Let's, let's do it for the city, you know, let's show some unity. Let's get behind one or two candidates, you know what I'm saying? I'm not saying everybody gonna fold.
Right.
But it should be down to three or four.
Exactly.
And everybody else can be like, hey, I'ma roll with you. And if you win, I'm asking to be on your cabinet. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
To learn and groom and grow, and then we can go to the next step. But we don't do that. Everybody wanna be individual. And in the end, you lose, and then you gone for another four years.
Then here you go, showing right back up.
Here you come again.
Here you come again. Skinning and grinning.
Oh, yeah.
Like the uh, song by uh, the OJ, skinning and grinning. Uh, but back to your race. So I mean, how did you feel? Does it, does it, does it bother you some that there are so many people in this, in this race, it's gonna be one victory? Uh, and, and what are you doing to, to stay relevant and stay ahead of this race?
That's a great question. So to answer your question, the first part of it, no, it, it doesn't bother me. Because like I said, I've been in Memphis all my life. I always follow politics. And this is what we do.
Right, right, right.
Instead of getting behind one person or the top two or three, we wanna divide and split.
Right.
So the biggest thing for me is staying focused on me. So Bill Jries with the um, Daily Memphian, he ran into me downtown. And he asked me a similar question. He said, uh, do you even think about your competition? I said, Bill, the only competition I think about is me.
That's it.
Is me being a better version of Brian each day and running my race. Because if I'm too busy watching Will and April's move, my food is getting cold over here.
That's right.
And I'm losing ground. And, and my mind goes back, one of my favorite fables is the hare and the tortoise.
Okay.
You know, and when you think about that, I always, I mean, we were kids.
Right.
But guess who won that race? That turtle.
That's it.
Sure do.
That's it.
Because he stayed focused.
Right.
Didn't get distracted.
Right.
And it's not how you start, it's how you finish.
That's it.
And every day I wake up, I act like I'm behind twenty points.
That's it.
And I go harder.
That's it. Slow and steady wins the race.
That rabbit was chilling one.
He was chilling, went to sleep and everything.
Burnt out, burnt out, burnt out.
He woke up, that turtle was right there, he finished like, he was like, oh, how do you beat me?
That's how you gotta be in life. You know, it's a marathon, not a sprint.
Not a sprint.
You know, and we getting closer to it. My, my whole philosophy was do all you can today.
Right.
And rest and then repeat.
That's it.
Just keep going, just keep going, just keep going. And, and you know, you'll get the desired outcome. So we got eight-three district, uh, super district eight-three. So a lot of people don't realize that you have, let me get this right, you got one, you got four city council people. People always say they got two city council people.
Four.
You have four. So you have one in your, um, how, how can we just?
Single member district.
Single member, single member district, yeah. So that's one through seven. And then you have super district, depending on what side of the city you're in, you're in eight or nine. You're in a single district and then you're in a super district at the same time. So uh, Mr. Harris is running for a super district eight-three, which uh, if you follow that uh, that race, uh, Martavis Jones is currently in that seat. Martavis Jones did some awesome things while he was there. And is still doing things as, as, as the candle begins to burn out. And so uh, are there some things that you will take along with you that you learned from Mr. Jones? Or uh, what is your take on continuing that, that seat?
Absolutely. So you know, if you think about Martavis, I mean, he's had a long run in public service. He was on the school board, uh, then after the school board, he went to the city council.
Right.
The biggest thing I, I learned from Martavis, this is up close and afar, was the focus on investing in Memphis, the infrastructure.
Right.
Being our downtown, bringing industry, uh, but also uh, and some money did make it to the neighborhoods.
Right.
But I will say this, that a lot of councilwomen and me and I spoke to who are either have been out, you know, retired and moved on, or they're on their way out, said the biggest thing they wish they would have done was made it more about the people in the neighborhoods.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because again, we always have to, I told somebody the other day, it's like, well, I don't feel no money making over here to so and so. I agree. Okay, so let's don't get it Michigan shrewd. We do have to invest in downtown, because look at the revenue downtown brings into our city. This is every major.
Right, 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 right.
However, if we wanna focus on education, reducing crime, everybody does not have access into downtown.
That's correct.
But if I can bring programs to your neighborhoods and your community centers, and also partner with some of our churches to bring services, then that's a step in the right direction.
Absolutely.
That's making it about the people.
Absolutely.
And that's what I'm for.
And I think that, like you said, it's a dual responsibility, because you know, tourist, tourism brings in money uh, for the city, you know, Memphis and May and you know, uh, other attractions. We have an NBA team that is up and coming. And uh, you know, hopefully one day we'll get the All-Star Weekend here. We gotta have things, hotels and stuff like that down here to accommodate the people and, you know, bring awareness to our city. But at the same time, we need to have funds within the city for the people, so that people can feel like, hey, this, this guy, this body represents me.
Right.
Right.
And right now, what we seen in the past, that people just don't feel like they're connected to the government.
Or representing, yeah, exactly.
Or representing it at all. And so we have to change that narrative and we gotta do better. So I'm glad that you brought it up and I'm glad that you're making that one of your key points uh, as you continue to run.
I have a question right quick, Brian. Could you tell the people, District um, Eight Three, Super District, what area does that cover?
That's a great question. So there are a total of seventeen zip codes.
Okay.
And Super District Eight.
Okay.
And so uh, my cover, the covering goes as far east is Hickory Hill.
Okay.
As far west is Box Town. So South Memphis, Orange Mound, Midtown, Downtown, Frazier, Raleigh, Oak Haven, Whitehaven.
Oh, my.
I mean, it's, it's huge.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it's a huge area. But I think, and we, I'm so glad you brought that up, because as I've been going into communities, they were like, well, we got you. I said, well, I appreciate that. But know that you're gonna vote for four people.
People, right.
You know, or five if you include the mayor.
Right, exactly.
And they were like, I didn't know that. You know, I'm like, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and so it's also about educating.
That's it.
Because again, is that we've gotta educate our people and make sure we vet candidates.
Right.
And get people in there who truly are about the work and not about a show.
Right. And we don't need any more shows.
We've had a lot of them.
We got a lot of shows in all different departments of our government.
Yes.
And so we're trying to curtail that. And, and you're right, we have to educate people, uh, because people really don't pay attention to politics until it's voting time.
Right.
And they don't know. I mean, it's sad. I, when I was running, I was like, do you know who your current state representative is? They were like, no. Like, you gotta know these things. Do you know who your city council person is? You know, you got an issue, who can you call?
Right.
And most people don't know. And we don't take the time to, we're running, but we're not taking the time to truly sit down and explain to people how this thing works.
Right.
And, and, and I tell people, and I would uh, give you this nugget, you gotta let people know that you don't have a magic wand. Like, when Brian gets in office.
Exactly.
He gonna, he gonna wave his wand and, and poverty gonna be eradicated and crime's gonna be low. It's a process.
Correct.
And it takes the other people on that body to work together.
And it takes the community too.
And it takes the community to buy into it. And a lot of times, uh, the community is asking for things, but sometimes we need to ask the candidates, we need to ask the elected officials, what can we do to partner with you to make our city better? It takes everybody to make our city better. And so uh, Brian is asking for your vote. Uh, when is voting day? Voting day is?
Yeah, so early voting is September fifteenth through thirtieth.
Okay.
And election day is Thursday, October fifth.
Okay, okay. All right. Early voting.
Early.
Please go early vote.
Yes.
Please early vote, cause then you get fifteen days to make a decision. You can go in, you can go anywhere and vote at that time. If you work, if you live in Whitehaven, but you work out in Raleigh, you can vote anywhere.
Right.
But on voting day, you have to vote in your precinct. And sometimes those lines are too long and it can be a deterrent for you voting. And we need to get good people in play. All right, Brian, before we get you off of here, cause I know you gotta get back to knocking on doors and doing your thing, tell the people, when you look in that camera, and tell the people why Brian Harris is the only choice for Super District Eight Three.
Yes, sir. So the reason why Brian Harris is the only choice for Super District Eight Three, number one, I'm a native son of this city, is that I'm not a transplant. I've had plenty of opportunities to leave this city and I never left, because I believe in this city, I believe in our work. I truly believe the grit and grind, because I'm from the grit and grind. And I've never forgotten who I am. The second thing is, is that my work did not start when I pulled a petition. My work did not start when I announced I have receipts of being in the community for, you know, feeding our, you know, homeless population, from looking after our elderly, from mentoring our youth. So everything we desire of a public servant, I have done, and I've been accountable to it. And the other thing too, is that I have what you call a transferable skill set. Is that, to me, education matters, um, and leadership matters, because if you have not managed budgets, like on the city and dealt with money like that, our city operating budget is seven hundred ninety-five million, this got approved. I've managed over that kind of money.
Yes.
In my roles with Fortune five hundred companies. So I understand financing, budgeting. But more importantly, I've never lost contact of who the most important person I work for is, and that's the people.
That's right.
So if you're looking for a council person who is dedicated, who has receipts, who never forgets where they come from and doesn't forget about the small guy, and wants to make sure that the money flows back to the community, and we address those issues through funding, through programs, and through the real work, I'm the guy. If you don't want those, vote for anybody else. Because don't vote for me if you don't wanna see that.
All right. Hey.
Well said, well said.
I did not write that speech for him. That, that came authentic. That was off the.
Off the dome.
Off the dome.
Yeah, he, no notes, nothing.
Mr. Brian Harris, once again, is asking for your vote to be the next city council person who holds the seat of District, Super District Eight Three. Uh, early voting starts in September fifteenth through thirtieth, voting day. Uh, early voting starts in September fifteenth through thirtieth. Voting day is October fifth. Uh, how can people get in contact with you now if they wanna sign, they wanna T-shirt and especially? Donate some money.
Absolutely. So to all those things, you can go to www.brianformemphis.com. So we have yard signs available, we have T-shirts, um, and we have a fundraiser actually. This Friday at Alcenia's downtown. Miss BJ.
frying with Brian.
frying with Brian.
When I saw that, I said, man.
But, uh, that, that's how we do it. Like I said, I appreciate all the support and I would tell you that I was just sharing with somebody today. The, my yard signs, I have over four hundred signs in yards. In yard, not on the corner, Bellevue or Macklemore. I'm in yards because that shows stake owner, stake, uh, owner, um, ownership and belief and so, uh.
And pretty much that's a vote. When you get a yard sign in the yard, that's a vote. Makes you feel good when you put that yard sign out there. You never get tired of that feeling.
I was driving down the street right here and I saw my sign in the corner. I'm like, man, that feels good because it shows people believe in your leadership.
And they're holding you accountable. They're counting on you to make a diff- difference. And I believe truly that if you win this, uh, race, when you win this race. That you're gonna do just that. So thank you for being on the show with us. We're gonna take a break. We'll be back with That's Law, the podcast. And, uh, when we get back, we got an interesting topic. We just seen Munchy walk in. We see if we can pull a munchy out of here. Y'all stay tuned. And we're back.
We're back.
That's Law, the podcast. I am Will the underdog Richardson.
And I am your girl April, AKA Mother Goose.
Uh, we're gonna jump off this campaign trail for a minute and we're gonna jump into relationships. We've been having some heated topics on relationships lately and getting a lot of positive feedback. People saying, keep talking about it. Some people saying, that's messed up. Uh, you know, you're putting out the game and all that stuff, but we just telling it how it is. And I think that if we are adults, then we should talk about things and just deal with it. I mean, it is what it is. Right. So what are we gonna talk about today, Mother Goose?
Today we're gonna talk about when to call it quits in a relationship.
When to call it quits in a relationship. That's probably the hardest thing to do in a relationship unless it's just really, really screwed up and both people know it's time to let go. But like, what do you do or when do you do it or how do you do it is a key question. And it's kinda like, you know, it's never a good time to break up with somebody, I guess. You know what I'm saying? You ever, you ever been broken up? Like somebody broke up with you and, and told you to get on down? Get the hell on?
Uh, yeah, I've, somebody's broken up with me before.
How'd you deal with it?
I just had to accept it.
Was it a shock to you?
One particular situation was, yes.
Have you ever broken up with somebody? And like, you didn't even, you have any like, any filter or anything? You just said, eh.
Yeah, I just, just, no. I could say that most people I've ever broken up with, you know, um, we can still be cool to this day. I, I think it's all about delivery and I feel that I might have delivered it the way, but it ain't really about what I say. It's more about how the person to receive it. You can, you can knock on the door, but if they don't answer it. And you, you still didn't get through. So I, if there's really never a good way to just end things. I don't think, and I don't think it's a right or wrong way to do it. It's just best on the person that's delivering, as long as they got the closure they need. Times the person on the other end may not get.
Well, I think the person that loses in that situation, now they're gonna feel like they didn't get closure. I'm kinda lose question. So, uh, it said, when to call it quits in a relationship. Okay, so what's the first sign to call it quits in a relationship?
You're not making each other happy anymore.
Oh, that's a big one. That's pretty much to me, that's pretty much the end of the game. Like, I always have this rule, oh, I say, oh, we got munchy in the building. We got munchy in the building. I said, oh, yeah. Um, yeah, I mean, you have to be happy, right?
Yeah, you do.
Now, some days you maybe, you know, you might be feeling some type of way. You might say, man, you know, this is screwed up or I don't like how this is going down. But like, the next day I have to be happy again.
I mean, cause a person's not gonna make you happy all the time and your happiness really shouldn't be found in that person. Uh, a situation can cause you to not be happy. But a person, if a person is dampening your spirit or dimming your light and you're not able to be your complete.
Hello, everybody. I'm sorry, I, I was just gonna be here tonight just to spectate, but this is right here is like a really good topic. You said something about when you're not making each other happy. Sometimes it's not about when you're making each other happy, it's about your own individual happiness. So if you're not happy, that's when the relationship has problems. Not because we're not making each other happy. Because one person could be happy and the other person is unhappy. So it's when you become unhappy.
It's time to start looking.
It's time to start leaving the situation.
Well, I would say leave because you can communicate.
To get to their happy spot.
To their happy spot, their sweet spot again. Yeah, so no, I think the first thing, if you unhappy, you should be like, hey, you should express yourself.
You should, you should address it. What I'm finding out is just period, like, you know, and there was a, there was this guy that had a podcast. He would talk to women and I'm not gonna say his name, but and, and, you know, uh, one question is that you have to ask is. What does a woman have to do to keep a man happy and what does a man have to do to keep a woman happy?
I think they're two different things.
They are, cause they, they look totally different. So we gotta start there first in order to know how to make someone happy before we know a relationship is over. Because if you don't know how to make a person happy or, or give them what they need, the relationship is over before it even gets started.
And some people you really can't make happy.
Because you're not compatible and you don't have, they, they don't have the capacity to love you based on what you're needing. And it doesn't make them a bad person.
There's somebody for everybody.
There's somebody for everybody.
All right, I'm asking, I'm asking you, so, so I'm gonna sit over here today and ask y'all questions. What do you have to do to make a man happy?
It just depends on what that man's needs. Everybody has their own needs, but, and most men needs peace. Um, a sense of place to, um, find, um. I guess support, encouragement, um, um, being their friend, um. Being able to be, they can be vulnerable with you and, um, not feel like whatever you leave with them, that you're gonna go back and tell your family, your friends and things of nature. Um, they need, like I said, the motivation, the encouragement. They don't really need protection, you know? I guess other than protecting your goods from giving it to somebody else or whatnot, I guess that kind of protection. But, um, just basically it's to hold their peace.
Okay, all right. I'm, I'm gonna come back to you. Will, what does a woman need to be happy?
Uh, I think she needs to be protected one. She needs to feel safe. So we have to provide safety for, um, that woman. Uh, she wants to be, uh, embraced. She wants to be loved and respected. And she wants a guy that has finances. She wants to be able to do nice things and to travel and, you know, women like gifts and stuff. So, you know, you have to be a, um, be able to provide, you know what I'm saying, for, for her. Um, and I think there's, uh, some key things that make women happy. You gotta have good sex too. Gotta have good sex.
All right, so I've been doing a little study. I've been asking just random women all over the city. Like, like, I might be at a liquor store, I might be at a gas station. I'm like, what do you have to do to make a man happy? And they give all the answers that are completely wrong. Completely wrong. What does a woman have to do to make a man happy, speaking from a man? She has to be inspirational. She has to be his friend. You said that and I, I, I was like, whoa, she said friend. You have to feed him, cause some men can't cook. And you gotta fuck him. You gotta fuck him. Every woman left out sex. And, and I just don't understand how women leave out sex, thinking that they gonna keep a man with no sex.
I don't think they not leaving out intention.
Nobody has ever said that, like, off the bat, I gotta fuck my man.
But I, but I, but I think that's kinda un- unknown. Like women, that's what we do, cause the man, hell, we wanna be fucked too. It kinda goes on both, on both ends. Women want to be fucked and loved too.
But if it's known, why that wasn't out? W- w- Will say, I gotta be a protector. I gotta make sure that, you know, I, I do this and, and provide and finances. He didn't say nothing about sex. And, and the reason why is because it's not really a man's job to be like, I'm gonna go in here and, and fuck my wife good tonight. No, men control access to relationships, women control access to, to sex. So it, we can't, we don't control it. If that woman tells us at night that she don't wanna have sex, the happiness, the unhappiness starts at that point, right there.
Right, but at the same time, a woman will be willing to give those things to you if every, uh, most, in most cases of all her other needs are met.
It does make it easier, like, you know what I'm saying? If a woman is happy.
And she feels secure.
Because like, some of the security stuff allows her to be able to show you her wild side. Cause she can trust you, you know, with, with those kinda details, you know what I'm saying? So I think it starts with that and then they, they give you, uh, what they know. You know what I'm saying? And, and.
And then those things have to be communicated. You know, I think a lot of people go into relationships and they don't discuss their sex drive. Or their, their need of sex. Those, those are important conversations. Those should not be, well, I don't wanna dance around it. No. A, a woman needs to know, I like to get my dick sucked. I like to do this. I, women needs to know that. And a woman needs to tell the man at the same time, well, I like X, Y, Z this. And if you all can't meet each other on it, then it's, we need to part ways. Because that's important. I have those conversations. Like, I tell a guy what I like in the bedroom, what do you like? What, what are you into? Because if you don't discuss those things.
I prefer syrup.
Because if you don't discuss those things, then you can't expect this woman to meet those certain needs because everybody's coming in brand new. What you might have liked in a relationship, uh, or the next person she, the other person she was with might not. And when that person tell you, well, no, I ain't big on doing X, Y, and Z, and you know that's something that you need.
You might need to make that.
You might need to make a, take an exit. And you don't be, still be with that person, knowing that this person is not gonna fulfill something that you know, that you know.
You know, you like.
Know you like. And I think that's where people mess up at, cause they'll still stick around.
So are there some things that you could give up?
Of course.
That you like sexually for a guy?
I think you can.
What about you, munchy?
No. So Chris Rock. But I mean, Chris Rock said it best. He said, women, women cannot go back financially and men cannot go back sexually. So, once a girl has, you know, did some things to you that we probably can say on the podcast. Or not. And once a man has taken a woman out to nice places and traveled with her, she ain't finna get with a guy.
They can't do that.
Cause she gonna be okay with going to Atlanta, but she'll rather be at the Atlantis and goddamn Bahamas.
But at the end of the day, to go back to what we were discussing, a lot of those things would be not an issue if we address it in the beginning. A lot of times we don't. And hear it. And, and, and we don't do it, or we, or that person tell you that's what they not gonna do and they show you, we still stay.
Yep, well, not even that. Maybe, a lot of people think and believe that they can change their person, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, I'm hearing what you saying, but you know what I'm saying, you know, here's the lie that people tell. They'll say, well, you know, we'll get around to that. And six months later, nothing's happened. And we're gonna get around to it. I need to take my time. A year then came across, now you got emotions. You feel like, am I really being too hard about this, this thing? Now you are compromising your own beliefs. Your own likes because you didn't cut it, you didn't cut it down, so.
And then because that person doesn't ever line up with what you feel you need, doesn't make that person a bad person. Because you knew that from get go. This is how I roll. You know, and I knew from get go, that's how you roll. So I think that now we're in our forties. You know what you want and you know what you don't want.
Yeah, like what makes you happy? Does travel make you happy? You like to travel? If travel makes me happy, then we should be traveling. Uh, and if you meet somebody that says, well, I don't like traveling, I don't like doing this, then you should.
It don't make them, she crazy.
It just means that y'all are not compatible. And that's the toughest piece for people to really come to grips with. It's not that we hate each other or anything like that. It's just that we not. What's number two? That was, that was pretty much like, man.
You don't trust each other.
I thought it was over with. Yeah, that's a good one. You gotta trust the person that you with.
Yeah, i- if you don't trust them, it's, it's, it's pretty much over with. Um, I, you know. People have done things where they have cheated and things of that nature. And the person say they forgive them, but then they can no longer be themselves and. Be able to go places and do the things that they once did. And you, we don't know what that is. We don't know if that's because the person is really trying to make up to the person. Or that person got them on like three sixty where they can't make a, a move.
That ain't trust, that's like insecurities at that point. See, that's bad. Nobody can put three sixty on me. Now, like, you know, if I'm traveling, uh, by myself. Then Tonya and I do share a three sixty. If she's out of the country or out of town, something like that. But not in the city, you know what I'm saying? I think that if you gotta go on your phone and see where I'm at right now. We don't, we shouldn't be together. Let me ask you a question. Have you ever went through a woman's phone? Never? You never had the desire?
Had the desire, but never went through the phone.
Okay, so when you had the desire.
I knew then that it was something wrong because I had this feeling. And I'm like, if I got your phone in my hand, I'm like.
Constipated.
Can I figure out this password or not? Or checking to just see if somebody is a notification or something. It was about over at that point.
Yes, there's trust issues. Have you ever went through a gas?
I sure have. And I would never do it again. Cause you already know it's something there. That's why you wanna look through it.
What do you do though when you see it? Cause I've never went through my wife's phone, yeah.
We on air.
Hypothetically, like when you like, let me see what this. This man got in his phone. You like, holy shit.
He got everything you thought.
You address it and deal with it accordingly. Uh huh, I did. I wouldn't do that. No, I don't.
Well, then why are you here?
That's why I'm no longer there.
Now you went through my phone.
That's a violation.
That, that phone like going through somebody underwear.
You know, it's funny, most men say that. Most men, you all say that, like, oh my gosh, she went through the phone or whatnot. I would have a problem with my man going through my phone.
I wouldn't have nobody going, problem going through my phone either.
I mean, but why go through my phone?
But I'm just saying, if you decided to, you felt you needed to.
Tell you the problem with men having, you got something, and women too. If you got something, then delete it. Don't hold on to it.
I never understood that.
You forget.
You delete it.
I've received text messages I wasn't supposed to receive. And I deleted plenty. Okay, and I put my phone.
I think you could be at the house. You could be at the house and you could be texting somebody. DMing somebody and then be like, click, and then you like, oh man, my food in there cooking.
No, sir. While I'm going to the oven, I'm like this, delete, delete.
You're an untrustworthy woman. You shouldn't, you shouldn't keep nothing. In your phone, like.
So you, you untrustworthy too then? You don't keep nothing?
I, I, I never kept anything in my phone. And the reason why was because it wasn't nothing that I wanted to hold on to. Cause once you see it, it's visual. Now you can think about it.
So you talking about sexting?
I ain't got no sexting in my phone. It's just been inappropriate, maybe conversation. I've seen it.
So you have received dick pics? I'm gonna tell you something. I, I'd never like pussy pics. Cause I couldn't tell if it was her pussy or somebody else. They all look the same. Unless it, let's say you have a different nationality, like. This is Asian pussy.
Light skin, dark skin.
This man here crazy.
You do not share the same future.
You don't share the same future. All right, yeah, you gotta be going down the same road.
I said, never got on here, I told you.
You gotta go down the same road.
Yeah, you gotta go down the same road.
Like, if you planning on moving to California, and I'm planning on moving to New York, we not gonna work, you know what I'm saying? Uh, not to say that long distance relationships don't work, but I get the point, you know what I'm saying? You gotta have some kinda goal. Tonya and I have an end game. We have the same end game. Like the end game is to retire in Key West and live in Key West and go fishing and boating every damn day in our later years. So we're working toward it. Now she has her own, uh, means of getting there. I have my own means of getting there, but at the. at the end of the day, they connect to work towards the same future.
So, the biggest thing I hear is communication. You get that after way early in the game.
It's just like, if you dating somebody and you know, you don't wanna have any more kids, but then Derek might wanna have some more kids, then y'all should be talking about that. Stop killing time, because because if you saying, oh, you want any more kids, like, I think I want about two more, and you know you don't. Don't agree to that.
Don't agree to that. Our future just don't lie. Speak on this too. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, um, we have had a change in the country where you cannot have an abortion as easy as you once had. So if you dating a guy and he tells you he's had a vasectomy or he doesn't want the kids, if you don't have those documents to bag that up, you might wanna get that checked out.
Right.
Because you get pregnant, now you having that baby, so that's some big communication. It is more than just saying, I got this, and then you don't know if he really got that.
And for men too.
And women.
Yeah.
Cause there's no card to come with, my tubes tied.
The tubes tied or had a hysterectomy.
Yeah, there's no card to come with that. You don't pull a card in your pocket, be like, here my card is, it's signed by the doctor.
Them single problems, I ain't never thought about that. I ain't never thought about that.
Right now.
Unless you the woman that have had her tubes tied and everything, and if a guy tell you he had a vasectomy, like, it don't, it don't matter, cause I know I can't have.
Right, only person that really is for sure is the person that say that they had.
What's low down is if that, you know, April has her tube tied and this, she meets this guy who's never had kids, and he say, I want two kids, and she goes along with it, and makes him feel like.
Of course.
I don't know why this baby ain't taking. But I love you.
I love you, we've been together two years now.
I love you so much.
And you can never tell them.
And we gonna figure it out, we gonna figure out what's wrong.
Yes, you can. When you take, when they have to go to the doctor and they wanna check my eggs, and they, they'll let them know then.
So, okay, what if a guy has, oh, this, we 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 get upset, but but this is good. What if a guy has like two kids, three kids? And he was like, you know, I'm fertile, like, I I can have a baby. And the girl like, okay, cool, we can have kids. And then he know the whole time, he had a vasectomy, he go to the doctor and and they take the sperm cells and check it, he has a zero sperm count. Could it be that he, his sperm is just dead? Cause there's no way to really tell if a guy had a vasectomy unless he do.
A doctor's gonna tell you, you gonna ask you, hey, you had a bisectomy.
I did, but don't tell her, cause I love her, man.
That's crazy, that's crazy.
That next one is, you're interested in other people.
Yeah.
That's the reason to call it quiz.
Yeah, I mean, if you starting to look a whole lot and be like, man, I wonder what she like, and I wonder what she like, and I wonder what she like, it's probably time to let that person go. And on top of that, the person that's with you is gonna start noticing that. You ain't showing the same interest no more. You starting to hang out more with Fat Charlies and stuff. Starting to go down there and see you smoking cigars every day. That's a shameless plug there. Uh, what else we got?
You've given everything you have.
Man, you did all you can do, and and it ain't enough.
I've been there.
Really?
I think, I think both parties get to that point though, uh, if you, if y'all both not agreeing that y'all can be as one. You giving and I'm giving, but we not giving what each other needs, uh. Game over. It is what it is.
But, like, what happens when you didn't did all you can do to show this person that you're really into them, you care about them? And they don't get it, like, it ain't enough, it ain't never enough. You ever had somebody that was greedy? Like, it was never enough, you know, if you buy a Chanel bag, she want the Chanel perfume to go with, she want the Chanel shoes. Never grateful for, you know, it's just, you know, you just don't, you can't give them enough.
I just like a guy, you know, he can have sex tonight, and then he might want some more tomorrow, and so on and so on, and the woman be like, damn, this mother just wanna be on me every day, all day long. You know, so, you know, everybody can feel like that, you know, men feel like that financially, women may feel like that sexually, like, you know, this guy just can't get enough.
Right, yeah.
Could could that be a case, like, I didn't gave enough of myself sexually, I didn't gave enough of myself financially?
That's true, that's true. I mean, you know what I'm saying, I mean, if you didn't put your money on the table. You can't go bankrupt doing it. Now, some guys do.
Yeah.
Some guys do. But I don't recommend that, you know what I'm saying, for your health. But I think that, you know what I'm saying, if you put your finances out there and your finances are not, are not enough, it's time to pull the, pull the plug. You gonna bankrupt yourself.
What's the next one?
We're not gonna be able to get through all these tonight, I know, but you're, you're lying to each other.
Where you been? I was at the podcast, know you was out.
I had, I had like three sixty on you, I saw you sitting down in Fat Charlotte speaking.
We get there sometimes. I think some guys and some women forget they got three sixty on their app.
Or their air tag in their car.
Or navigation from your car.
Bluetooth phone when you get in the car every time, and if you pick up something different that.
I had one in my car, man.
For Tennessee Bureau Investigation.
Thank you, Tennessee Bureau Investigation.
Man, they do a good job.
I didn't know, I didn't know. Sweep your car, I said, sweep my car, I said, I think, I think I'm being followed a, a bug, because this man know my every move.
That's scary.
My heart was beating, and he said, April, why don't you stop your car now, turn on your Bluetooth, is it thing you picking up? I said, wait a minute, and I ran my hand, and I ran, and I felt something, I said, hold on, what? I said, oh my god.
All the shit I didn't say.
And I was out of town the time, where was I at?
That was, that was, it wasn't because, it was just a principle.
I remember that, we were somewhere, cause I was with mom and dad, we was going to some restaurant, and dad said, what? I don't believe, I said, what's going on? Like, man, dude done put a truck in April's car, I was like, man, I'm glad I'm out of town.
But I took care of it though.
Once again, for TBS, shout out to all the TBS.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Not tracked. What's the next one?
Uh, you don't look, you don't look forward to seeing each other.
Yeah. You be like, ah, just got out of work.
Here come this nigga, here now, hey, 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 you know.
Man, you sit in the car, and you pull up in the driveway and you playing number, man, like sad music and shit, and you like, man, I gotta go inside this mother.
Just, just, just back out the driveway. When you look forward to going to work.
Yes. Going to the gas station, that is a problem.
I just wanna go buy a pack of cigarettes.
You look forward to going to the doctor.
Go to Home Depot, walk around Home Depot.
You're feeling trapped.
Have you ever felt trapped?
Yeah, absolutely. Sometimes you can get so deep into a relationship, that you feel trapped, like, you made, you done made plans and obligations and things of that nature, and it's not so much as like, you can't get out. But you just be like, you 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 wanna be at the point where you don't wanna disappoint somebody. Because you care about them, and you cherish something special with that person, and you just don't wanna feel like, I'm finna let you down by telling you that.
I can't be with you anymore.
And so sometimes you stay longer than what you really should.
Yeah, I think, I think the majority of people stay longer than they should. In a relationship, I think every time you've broken up with somebody, like, I could have did that three, four months ago, you know, same outcome, you know what I'm saying, but.
It's gonna hurt regardless.
It's gonna hurt regardless. Uh, what's the next one?
You can't stop fighting.
Oh, yeah, if you argue another time, man, I hate arguing.
Me too.
I don't argue.
Man, I hate it, man.
I cannot.
Especially when it gets physical, like, you know, I'm telling y'all something, I'm I'm real big on this, a woman should not put her hands on a man. Definitely should not put his hands on a woman. I hear women all the time, say, I hit his ass. You gonna be mad when he hit your ass.
Right, yeah. Don't put your hands, don't put your hands on nobody, nobody.
If it gets physical, it's time to let it go.
Absolutely.
You were.
I was in a relationship once, and I had to let it go.
Yeah, yeah, it happens. It happens.
Wow, I thank God I've never experienced it.
Keep going.
You're not, you're not together for the right reasons.
What does that mean?
Yeah, what does that mean, not together for the right reason? I guess all the reasons that we named above, above this, the right reasons.
You in it because it looks good.
That's it. Your family, your home, your friends group would be affected if you were to break up.
Yeah, they only affected.
That's why you shouldn't be dating within the circle. Because then it does like mess up the dynamic sometimes, you know what I'm saying, when you date somebody, that everybody cool with.
Yeah, everybody, everybody, somebody like, this like, this is my girl, Jan, Jan, this is, yeah, and we all tight.
We all tight. And you break away and bring another chick in, then everybody looking at her like.
And then Jan's still there.
Yeah, Jan's still hanging around too. Yeah, it's bad. Gotta get a front row seat to the bullshit.
Gotta get a front row seat.
You don't feel heard in your relationship.
You don't feel heard in a relationship, that's big too. Like, you know what I'm saying, like, you know, I'm saying we gotta save money, instead of spending money, like, you ain't hearing me. Or, you know what I'm saying, I'm just really in a, in a dark place right now, feeling depressed, and you like, oh, you wanna eat some popcorn, like, you know.
No, I ain't a popcorn.
You know what I'm saying, so, yeah, you gotta be heard, please.
Pop your ass.
You can't forgive them.
Forgiveness is, is.
It's key.
It's key.
If you can't forgive them, and you gonna always hold that over it, bring it up in there. Time to let it go. Where you going with your other chick? Come on, you said you forgave me.
I did that two years ago, well, still, still on my mind.
Where you going to smoke some reefer? Now, I told you, I'm through with that narcotic anime.
I do uh heroin now. Make sure you have some Nocan when I come back.
You've stopped talking about a future together.
You know, at first you talking about like, let's look at engagement rings, and then you don't wanna talk about the wedding no more and stuff, yeah. Yeah, things didn't change.
I had somebody tell me the other day. Somebody told me that real talk.
Told you what?
Like, they, they proposed, and the woman has not set like a date, he's like, I don't know women getting married, cause she ain't set no date.
Who sets the date?
We set it together.
Together thing?
We talk about it.
Yeah, but.
If you ain't talking about it.
Oh, she now you talking about it.
She ain't talking about it.
Oh, yeah, he need to check that out.
Yeah, big time.
You need to check that out.
Yeah, cause that's already on our mind, when you put that ring on our finger, I promise you, we on the counter looking like this.
It's been like three, four years.
How's September fifteen look to you?
Yeah. Don't sound bad. I can't, I can't, I got a golf tournament.
How about the following weekend?
They gonna be set at some point.
They gonna be set probably within the day or two.
So if a woman don't set that date?
She ain't trying to get married to you, just like a man ain't gave you a ring. She just took the jewelry.
She took the jewelry.
I think this is a top one based on for a man especially.
What did you do with your wedding ring? Did you sell it?
No, I still have it.
You still have it, okay.
I'm in love with you.
Yeah, I don't know what I'm, I really, I talked to mom and dad about that the other day, I said, I wanna do something with it, I mean, it's like
You wanna melt it?
Three and a half carries.
I had somebody turn, turn, turn my ring into some damn ring.
I don't know if I wanna do something, then give it to Abigail, because it is from her father, or or what, so.
Yeah, I guess you could. Turn the market to.
If you get the right guy that's gonna propose to.
Take the diamonds out of it.
To Abigail, that guy's gonna come, come to you and fill up and say, um, I wanna marry your daughter, and at that point, you can say, hey, you the right guy for her.
No, it ain't jank. I don't know what I wanna do with it.
Abigail put their ring on, they put a track in his car.
But unfortunately, I really don't even know where the ring is. I put it up somewhere back. But anyway, moving on, you don't have sex anymore.
Sex is important.
Oh, it's important.
I I I told you that, like, what, I told you what keeps the shit going, like, Willie said, men being financially responsible. And my thing is, you know, women, you know, giving up sex.
But women want great sex too.
I know that, I ain't, I I didn't say that the man don't have to perform, because you got men out here that hadn't taken care of themselves and whether that's grooming, or whether that's.
Health wise.
Health wise, and a woman ain't gonna wanna do that, you know what I'm saying, but when that sex stop, it just questioned everything, so like, for me, when I have sex, I feel connected. You know, like, we got some, we got some, we, this is communication. This is like me and you talking like, without saying anything. This, this.
It's important. The three top things that messes up a, a relationship is communication, money, and sex. Sex is honestly the third one. Communication is the first one. And then it's the money, then it's sex.
I think if money is funny, you ain't talking anyway, communication out the window, you know what I'm saying?
And if you ain't communicating, got no money, you ain't having sex.
Yeah, not some broke motherfuckers having sex right now.
Yeah, but they both broke, and they okay with it, but you know.
Well, women shouldn't be dating broke men anyway, and and broke, and men shouldn't be dating broke women.
And men shouldn't be dating broke.
You shouldn't be dating broke.
It shouldn't be dated at all.
If you broke, you shouldn't even be looking for.
Main focus should be getting some money, then sex won't be a problem. But if you got money and sex is still a problem.
Something wrong with that equation.
Wrong with that equation, cause everything else should be lining up, we done went on some good dates, and we ain't sleeping with each other, having sex. My, my, my antennas go up.
Wanna ride all in my truck.
Next two. You're never satisfied, no matter what, you're never satisfied.
I I read something about myself, and I'm gonna say this, and Fabian probably could agree, but I don't know, uh, I'm throwing them out there. They, they said that the Virgo is one of the hardest signs in Zodiac to date. I feel like there are times that I'm like, not satisfied a lot of times, because for me, as a Virgo, I I give a lot, no matter what I do, like, if I sit here at this podcast, I'm gonna give y'all a hundred percent, or I ain't gonna do it at all. I ain't coming down like, cause I, cause I'm not feeling it. If I'm, if I'm involved, I'm gonna give it my all, or I ain't gonna do it. I shut down my food truck because I had lost my passion, I wasn't fulfilled with it, so you have to be satisfied.
You're coming back though, right?
I am coming back, because now I'm, I'm, I'm getting that energy back up again, so if you're not satisfied in something, man, that is bad to be there, because.
It's about satisfaction. Fulfillment.
Oh, yeah, fulfillment and satisfaction, same thing.
You gotta have it.
Same thing, peace pocket crack.
And the last one for the evening, your gut tells you something is wrong.
If you feel like something's wrong, something's wrong, like, you ever had a feeling like suspicion, like suspicion?
Intuition is a mug.
It is, you should follow your intuition. I'm saying, sometimes you can be wrong, sometimes you overthink things, you know what I'm saying? I have overthought things, you like, man, wait a minute, you know what I'm saying? Then you, then you start investigating, you like, man, that's crazy, you know what I'm saying?